All right, it's six o'clock here on Monday, August 11th. We're gonna call the regular council meeting to order here with a quick roll call. I'll do it again for you since we got everybody here. Sue Erickson, Ken May, Joel Newman, Sean Burtzle, Craig Conley. Approval of the agenda, any questions or changes that anybody noticed on the agenda? Or anything they want to pull out? Sue with the first, Craig with the second, all those in favor signify with a sign I. Opposed, same sign, and any abstentions. Okay, our citizens forum, Deputy Lance, we'll just let you jump in here and kick off so you can get out of here.
Okay, I don't have a ton upset with that meeting last month, so if you have anything from last month, I take that too, but football game to start up again, last year we kind of had some traffic issues. Sixty-nine to open now, so hopefully it kind of goes back to normal, but I think the first game is the twenty-third.
Yeah.
I think so, I don't know if you want to kind of play that in my ear, you know, see what?
Iowa State to be the thirtieth.
Is it thirtieth?
Home. So. Is sixty-nine south of Alaman North and North Ankeny still closed, right?
Yeah, I think it's closed down at like one hundred and fifty-eight or whatever it there.
So that's still gonna affect traffic here.
I would imagine unless they go down and divert off there, I don't know what people do, but it's something I guess to start thinking about now.
Yeah, I mean, the traffic control you guys did there the last couple of games of last year, I think, was really appreciated. I'm not sure if that's something that is feasible to do for these first couple or not.
Doesn't mean that's that's kind of above my pay grade, but it's something I can bring back to her if you want to.
Yeah, if you could, could you take that? Is it Leanna?
Yeah, she's still, I can talk to her tomorrow, so.
If you wouldn't mind just planting the seed, there's enough time to maybe be ahead of it. I would imagine with that bridge closed north of Ankeny on sixty-nine, that a lot of people, anyone at or west of that would just take the straight shot, you would think, right through town here on R thirty-eight, so.
Yeah, I think they probably usually do anyways.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be great if you guys could do that again. I did have a resident reach out about, which is just something to keep your eye on when you're in town about underage golf cart drivers. I know it's been brought up before, we see it from time to time, I let the resident know to give you guys, you're not an emergency line of call if they happen again, but just when you guys are in town, if you notice that, if you could just remind those kids or let them know or their parents know that they shouldn't be driving a golf cart if they don't have a driver's license. Anything else, anybody?
School starting in.
Yep, we actually talked about afternoons about trying to make a more constrained effort to be in towns with school getting out, so. Definitely trying to present that end of school, but obviously we have a lot of towns too, so it'll be kind of split up with.
Yeah. Perfect. All right, thank you. I don't know if we're getting the reports still, or if they're not, will you check on that with Leanna as well?
Get it?
To make sure.
I got it, so I can afford it.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay, we did get it, yep. Perfect, all right, thanks, Deputy Lance, appreciate it. All right, any other citizens that are here that would like to speak, guests, please.
Good evening, Karen Sefton, Story County Community Foundation, you have some information in front of you, just a reminder, our grant season is open. I know you have an outstanding grant, Jonathan, I've been talking about it, the South Side part that you received from the store last year. But I'm very confident that that will get done. Our grant season applications are due September thirtieth. It is our twentieth anniversary, and that celebration is October second at Ryman Gardens, you'll be getting invited for that. And if you have any questions, let me know. I do want to bring up to your attention too, besides the park, the Ames Public Library Friends Foundation received a grant for countywide digital equity, so your library would have received hotspots and tablets that people can check out, so.
Yeah, thank you for that, she did report that to us, so it's a great service.
I imagine so, so if you have any questions.
Can you tell me again the date of your anniversary program?
October second, four thirty to six thirty at Ryman Gardens.
It's right there, kind of on the right side, halfway down on this.
And Eric Hanson from KCCTV will be our featured speaker.
Awesome. Thank you very much for coming. Any other citizen or guest that wants to speak? Kurt, do you want to talk?
Sure.
During the citizen forum?
Just want to revisit the changing of the way talked over here, because people have complained. Just wanted to bring up once more, you're probably gonna vote to pass the library thing again tonight. And I understand you're not voting for a library, you're voting to change where our local option sales tax is used. I did some researching throughout the past month. And Dakota State Iowa under four two three point nine says that if you do it like this, it is possible that maybe a three percent of the voters could overturn this or or come to you with signatures of forty-five, fifty people. And therefore, it would cause this to go before the public again were lower, only fifty-one percent would be needed to stop this rather than sixty that you guys are putting on the ballot this November, so. I just wanted to clarify if this is actually true, and then if it's not, I'd really like to know what's gonna be on the ballot, so that we can try and and build a case against that with the community of Slater and the taxpayers.
The process that you described is is according to the attorney that's assisting the city with Eilers Cooney. She stated that that's the process that you would follow for issuing general obligation bonds, not revenue bonds. So the process would involve the city publishing a notice within four to twenty days before the public hearing. And at the public hearing, that's when the city council would take action to have an issuance of revenue bonds.
So what you're doing is superseding all of the taxpayer input and just skipping forward to yourself saying, we're gonna take all of our local option sales tax for twenty years and use for this event center.
I'm just responding to the process.
Okay.
I think the difference, my understanding of the difference is revenue bond versus GO bond, general obligation bonds require that sixty percent threshold be met. The avenue that's being pursued here that we're discussing, and we're gonna go through the language tonight, Kurt. But we're looking at a revenue bond. Revenue bonds are more commonly recognized or known from utilities like water or sewer that are backed by the users' rates. There is revenue bonds, and these revenue bonds, the attorneys said, have been used or a total legal pathway to be backed by local sales tax dollars. And so in order to use local sales tax dollars for a revenue bond, the council has to have the authority and the voters have to say that local sales tax dollars can be used to fund a revenue bond. So if this change happens, it would open up some of the local sales tax dollars to back a revenue bond to pay that back over whatever time period. We're not at the stage of discussing a bond or issuing a bond or how much of a bond or any of that at this point. Really, this is just changing the councils, the cities' right to use or their ability to use local sales tax dollars.
So if it gets to the point of actually issuing a bond or creating a revenue issuing bond, then the community could come together with the three percent vote and 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 stop this for another year.
Only for general obligation.
It's only for the general obligation bond. This, the council councils have the right, after local sales tax dollars are redefined, the council has the right to issue the bond in a public hearing with a majority vote.
What was the one percent sales tax initially used for, was supposed to be used for?
Supposed to, or, well, it it was initially by the city of by the city of Slater, it was set up as one hundred percent property tax relief, right? When it was voted in the eighties.
Property tax relief unless you vote to change it for other uses.
So that's what we're doing now. So we're doing, we're gonna vote this time, talking loud so people can hear. You're gonna have on the the bond issue, you're you're stopping the the one percent sales tax to be used for property tax relief. And instead, you're gonna use it for what this council deems fit for capital projects that have to be defined on this bond on this November ballot.
Ten percent would be for property tax relief and ninety percent for other legal.
So you're taking away the ninety percent.
Ninety percent of the local sales tax dollars.
Okay.
What's that ninety percent being used for now?
Hundred percent.
Property tax relief.
What's it gonna change for our budget? If we're using it for property tax relief, that means we're not taxing the taxpayers to to cover such expenses, so if we're going to take ninety percent away from the budget, that means we're gonna have to do somewhere else come up with ninety percent of whatever loss is to cover whatever it's covering right now.
I think there's a lot of, I think theoretically, you know, we could talk through this in circles and everybody I know has a lot of opinions on it. I think tonight's discussion and focus is more around redefining the use of local sales tax. This vote could, this vote is gonna be on the ballot most likely, I assume, will pass again tonight, the final language. So in November, it'll be on the ballot, the public can vote how they want on that. But that means nothing about, that passes, that doesn't mean that any bond will ever even be considered in theory, it could not be. Or it could be, I think the discussion about how do you use those bond dollars if approved, I think the question is, is the public, will they approve this measure to redefine the local sales tax and open it up for the city council to use, as Kirk said, for capital projects?
This council's also said that this wasn't gonna raise property taxes, but we're taking ninety percent of what's keeping our property taxes down. And we're gonna try to redefine it for a revenue bond, so I don't see how we're gonna keep functioning if we're at the about raising taxes that we said we weren't going, or I should say, the council said they weren't going to do to meet our obligations and our needs for the community to to function, because obviously this money, this money is being used somewhere in our budget to cover things, and I'm sure there's probably ways to go through it and figure out of our X dollars that come around this loss, this is where the ninety percent is gonna come from and how we're gonna cover those going forward.
Yeah, I think, you know, every dollar that the city of Slater gets is essentially tax dollars. Some of it's rates through water and sewer rates, so every dollar we get is tax dollars. I think what it comes down to, and this is an activity that we're gonna be going through later in the year, is just a little bit more of capital planning, and you talked about needs of the community, you know, and I think on on the opposite side to that statement, there's people that believe that expanded library space in the community and the project is a need of the community. So I think that's more the debate for the council is, where are the needs for the community and how do you prioritize where those funds go? And how do you do that within your, the confines of the revenues you have through taxes and avoid increasing taxes the best you can?
I can answer the majority of that money because it was not was not guaranteed of how much you were gonna get on a given year, so it was typically not budgeted. Ahead of time, and a lot of time, it was left to see how much came in, and we used that the following year. So for instance, the Tahoe that we bought for EMS was was from lost dollars the year that that was purchased. That wasn't originally in a budget to buy the year in advance of that, you didn't put it in, you weren't, you weren't doing it then, but it was but that wasn't originally in the budget for that, and so we've used it a lot of times for some extra things like that and filled in where we needed to in our budget. The that's where most of that's gone over the over the years, oh, and and so a lot of that was rollover funds. And so a lot of that, some of the money that's in the library's fund was rollover. That's a loose term, but it's, that was money that we designated to the library that we didn't use our budget, that was money that came in and lost that year, so that's where some of the money is, it's in that, right? Come speak to that. And then Kurt, you had a question about a three percent, that three percent is, has to be signatures petitions.
That's correct.
Against something, it's not a vote of three percent.
That's correct. Forty, roughly forty-five people would be three percent of the registered voters in Slater. If we would petition the city council, we could kick this can down the road for another year, but you're saying probably not on the way.
Because it's not a general obligation.
That and doing it just with the council and not of the vote, not not of the will of the vote.
This goes on, but what we're, what we're talking about passing tonight is so that it will go on, it'll go on to the ballot. It's for a vote, it's just that it's a fifty fifty vote, fifty-one percent, forty-nine percent vote, it doesn't have to be a sixty percent vote.
That's correct.
Because of the type of bonds that they're gonna, or what the the usage.
Yeah, I understand that. I think the community is, the community just needs to be made aware of, you're taking where our money that was meant for property tax relief and using it for something that's been voted down three times in the last years.
Kyra, you raised your hand.
Yeah, I think this vote specifically isn't taking that money away necessarily. The council's issuance of a bond could do that for any purpose. But this vote in November doesn't necessarily.
Opens the pathway for you to do it.
Any other citizen comments? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda here. I know there's was some follow-up and conversation today regarding number two on the consent agenda, the inroads invoice. There is a clarification, excuse me, clarification in the packet about what was spent where and what the breakdown of that invoice, that gives a little more clarity, I think, than we had last week when we met. The section on R thirty-eight that caused us to withhold the payment last month, pull it out of the claims ended up being ten thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars of the total bill of twenty thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars. And that's for that patchwork that was done out there. I know that Jerry talked to Mark briefly about that, and I know Mark's gonna have a conversation and ask what inroads can do.
He's not here today, but he'll check with him tomorrow and what the options would be.
Well, the note that we got, I called Jerry this morning, was because the, I didn't, I don't recall the question being what percentage of the total inroads bill went to what, it was that, I don't think we were happy with the quality of the of the patchwork that was done for what, regardless of the amount that was spent on, is that, that's what I remember, Craig?
I think it was.
But I was thinking that whole.
That's where I was thinking as well.
But either way, the concern is, I'm not sure that's gonna hold up till this time next year.
I don't think it's expected, I don't, I don't think that's, I I don't believe that that was ever the expected life of it. Because the rest of the road is so deteriorated, I'm pretty sure, and Mark can report back. Inroads reported back basically that, yeah, we can get you through another winter, but this road is shot everywhere. And I think what they did in those areas is they ground out all the way down to base and filled back in. But if you're, the patches suck, I've said it last week, everybody said it, I think, nobody, nobody agrees, I don't think they're getting worse, but I think when you look at, if you analyze the rest of the road or walk out there and look at it, it's like, it's broken up everywhere.
No, yeah, no disagreement, I'm just, the, I think the discussion with what Jerry addressed in our in our packet wasn't, I don't think what our what our discussion was at the last meeting in terms of percentages, that helped clarify that because we thought it was the whole thing. But the quality was, was Craig's comment was, if that was work that I had done by that company, I'd be having a discussion before I paid the bill, and that's.
Yeah, and and just for clarity, Jerry said, apparently a couple of us responded back to Jerry, and he sent an email out that maybe all of us didn't get.
Yeah, sent to the entire council.
Agreed, somebody might not have been on their email and saw it, so.
Was this today?
Yes, this afternoon, I sort of say there.
Yeah.
He might not have caught it. Right, so Jerry, you might want to let people know what that email said.
Yeah, just that I talked to Mark and he's gonna check with inroads tomorrow, because he's on vacation today to see what our options are, because likely with this patch, they went to the full depth of seven inches. And so probably one of the options that they'll provide is that they'll mill it. And I thought it'd be a couple inches, and Mark said, no, it'll be probably less than that, so if they mill it down an inch or less and resurface it, which I think, I went back out and drove it, and it is, it's solid, but you, it is somewhat wavy, it's not, it's not smooth. So if they just mill it an inch or so, you you run that likelihood of it getting chipped up with, you know, as the weather changes, so it may affect the livelihood of it.
Yeah, I'm not sure there's a good response, I mean, I don't think there's a great way to do it, I think, but I don't know that we had it on our necessarily on our plan to redo Lynn.
I've never really seen a plan, so it's hard to say, you know, I don't think we have, I don't.
I think that's gotta move up in our, in our priorities, because I don't think that road's satisfactory.
For the, I was the first one to complain, so. My complaint was about the the smoothness of it. I don't disagree that with as poor as the shoulders are, it is not gonna be a long-term patch. My objection was, none of us would accept that on our driveway with, burning your teeth out driving down it. Sean said he thought it got a flat tire. So that's my primary concern, the fact that it's not gonna hold up for ten years. I know just enough about concrete blacktop, there's no way, it's not gonna hold up long-term, but it should be better in the short term than this. So I guess I would agree with your email, plus have Mark talk to me again if they get a resurface and just to get smoothed out. But no, we're not doing a complete redo of the base, it's gonna come apart on us, but at least with the ten grand we spent, I would like to at least start in better condition than it is right now. My two cents.
Yeah, I'm just not sure it'll end up being a lot better, just if there's not a base underneath it, it's still gonna buckle in when you got trucks and buses going over constantly.
I say, long-term, they can hold up.
I think it's when you look at, instead of analyzing and looking at how the patches are turned up, you look at what they patched around and what's there and what they're running a roller over to roll that in those areas. I think you start to look about the feasibility, about how good can you actually make something so bad.
No, and I, my call was just initiated because that wasn't part of what was addressed in there, and I, and I think that's what our primary concern was, so.
I think the pricing gives a little more, for me, the pricing gave a little more context, because it was kind of, I was with Sean.
Yeah.
It thought everything, the twenty thousand five thirty-six was for that, it's like, holy cow, when now I see that it was the ten thousand, it's like, okay, that's it's still bad, it's still bad quality, but
It's just a generic band-aid.
It doesn't feel like we're overcharged for bad quality necessarily, but.
So I don't know, I didn't have a chance to look at the other patches, but I guess since I have one, I don't have a problem paying that ten grand of the bill, but until there's some kind of resolution, I really hold it.
That's fine, we're back together on the twenty-eighth. We can revisit it, we'll pull that out, that out. Pull the whole total out. I think we should hold the whole total. The whole invoice motion. Yeah, can we have a motion, well, let's, is there anything else in the list here that anybody would want to pull out?
Just a quick question, go ahead.
I just thought I'd have a quick question, sorry, did Casey's get their licenses renewed, is that all done now? Is that just?
With your approval of the consent, it would be.
Okay.
Yeah. It would be the alcohol and liquor license.
That's all I got.
Are the liquor and cigarette licenses.
Are we sure we want to renew them?
The alcohol ones are automatic, the liquor, the cigarette one, we can't, I, so I'm on handwrite them an old version way, until we can get it to go connect.
Yeah, I typically like to bring those forward, just so that the council's aware that it's time for renewal, if there's issues. But you're aware.
But ultimately, you don't have any say in them.
They ultimately get passed, whether we pass it or not, it's just a uglier procedure if we don't. But they'll still get it.
It's not where I came from, but I didn't, yeah, they were all subject to.
Well, they're all subject to that, but I can tell you if you deny them, they still get it. It gets overwritten by the state.
That's interesting.
It's really just a.
Maybe certain organizations.
No, I don't think so, but that's, that's my understanding from past history, it could have changed.
Finally, a quick question was on plate service, I'm glad you got one, absolutely support that. Didn't know if there was any closure, so instead of making somebody drive fifty miles, I guess.
She lives four houses down.
Oh, I just saw Reynolds, so.
No, I think that's where it's maybe based, but this gal that does the cleaning lives four houses down here, Slater resident.
Question answered, then, I just didn't want somebody to drive fifty miles.
Yes, Sue, Sue kind of spearheaded that for us, which if you haven't noticed, that one of the things I noticed is if you look at that baseboard back there, you can actually see the reflection of the light on that baseboard, which I think is a good thing, because we've been, we have not done a good job of cleaning this place, and so it's good to have her, and she did a great job deep cleaning it.
No, I fully supported that, I was worried about the noise, but it's not.
Thank you. We're proving a hundred and seventy dollars.
It was a deep clean, like a five-hour process.
It's a hundred and seventy dollars every two weeks.
But you get it.
Trash clean, everything like that, yep. Okay. So then I will take a motion first to pull inroads invoice for twenty thousand five hundred and thirty-six to be tabled until the eight twenty-eight meeting. Joel Newman with the first. Craig Conley with the second, all those in favor signify with I. Opposed, same sign. Abstentions, so that's pulled, and now I would welcome a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We can approve the consent agenda.
One second.
All those in favor, Craig Conley first, Sean Burtzle second, all those in favor signify with I. Opposed, same sign, and any abstentions. Presentations, reports, Jerry, city administrator, for those that are new here, if you haven't met here, this is Jerry Moore, our new city administrator, and Lindsay Siegel, our city clerk.
Yeah, just a few things, the Heartland of Iowa Trail ride and dedication on Saturday went pretty well, there was over three hundred registered. They started here at Slater and rode east on the trail to Collins and back. After the registration, I came here and worked for a while, and so I think they may have gotten wet at some point during the ride, but the station had a mobile food truck, which went over really well, he went through all his beverages were provided, public house was open, serving coffee. Conservation and the Iowa Bike Coalition sold t-shirts. And so just want to thank them, Story County Conservation and the Iowa Bike Association for organizing that event.
I'm gonna interrupt you just a little.
Yeah, or hey.
I appreciate you doing that, it was really real well received, I think, I think Jerry, you did mostly arranging, because Lindsay wasn't here yet, I think Mark set up with you.
Crystal from.
There was pictures taken, I don't know if they'll be published, but there was, people wanted to take a picture, so thank you for that, that's the kind of thing we need for bikes.
For sure, if there's an event, I'll be here.
And one thing, Maxwell gave away free beer.
Oh, okay. It was too early for that here.
I want to see their insurance on that one.
Yeah.
It was a fire department.
Once again, I want to see that.
Mark is meeting with Mark from Snyder Associates this week to talk about the installation of the treatment plant. He's also meeting with a rep from engineering and design in September, first, part of September, to talk about the damage at the waste, we, the wastewater treatment plant. So those things are coming up, Lindsay and I worked on a notice that we're gonna post for persons who are interested in serving on the city council what that process entails, including the issue that we talked about earlier with regard to the referendum that'll be on the November election. We'll make sure that we get that out to department heads before we post that. I will be, if the resolutions are approved for the ballot measure, I'll be getting those to Story County and Boone County, because they're due on the twelfth. And then lastly, the pool manager, Mark and myself, will be talking about our recap session to talk about how the summer pool session went, issues that came up and ways that we can improve the process and probably take a look at the fees and whatnot, and so anything that's program-related would be coming back to the city council for consideration. And I guess before city council, we would go to Parks and Rec. And then city council.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, which is Sunday.
I think, yeah, thank you. A couple of dates on my end, I'll just give, I think.
Taylor, before we leave, Jerry, a couple of questions on his. Were you gonna touch on the new potential?
Yeah, I gave that information in the Friday update, we did provide an offer to Anastasia, an employee that works at the South Story Bank, and she's gonna start on Monday. And so Lindsay and I have been working to set up the office. And so Lindsay and I have been working to set up the office and for her preparation. So we're excited about it.
And the only other question was, I got a scoop deadline in my calendar, so I know you guys are transitioning in.
We have it on our calendar. I started.
Alright, great.
And we're reaching out to everybody that's involved in that.
Did you find Danielle's list of all the people she reminded that there's a cutoff?
I don't know that we've actually had the opportunity to do that.
She had a long list. I had no idea where it's at, so maybe, uh, Jen.
We know where it's at.
Okay, great, because I have no idea. I just know she contacted a lot of.
We know where it's at. We intend to keep that.
Okay, great.
I can probably forward it to you. I think everybody has listed on this.
Probably. Alright, um. I was obviously gone last week. I think I came in this morning to catch up. Uh, I think I'm very excited and bullish about what our future looks like. I came in and. I can feel the camaraderie and synergy that's create starting to form here between Lindsay and Jerry. I think. They're learning each other pretty quickly and starting to work together efficiently, which I think is nice. Um, Lindsay has kind of taken the lead on our IT stuff with Chad's help and uh tomorrow, all the computers and emails should be created and set up. And everything should be functioning hopefully by the end of the day tomorrow from our IT partner Craig. Uh, so that's exciting, I think, and everybody's looking forward to that, which I think is a really good thing. Um, I was going to mention obviously that we'd extended an offer that had been accepted, someone to begin. Um, in the coming weeks, Jerry and I have our uh Ames Economic Alliance contact has shifted. Um, if you didn't see the recent news, they signed a uh an agreement with Green County to now do the economic development support for Green County. So I believe that puts Ames now the way it is, the way it's forming up is actually really beneficial to us regionally because now. Green, Story, Boone, Webster, and Hamilton County are all. Underneath economic, an economic development office where there'll be conversation happening, team meetings about all the economic development in that region. So hopefully it creates a good synergy that we can benefit from. Um, so Greg is going to be, uh, Greg, who's worked with us, is going to be the, uh. I believe it's the executive director for that, um, Green County partnership. So we are going to be working with Brenda Dryer, um, a pretty familiar name to the Ames area. Uh, very good, very astute, and Jerry and I are meeting with her next Friday. This Friday, following Friday, as well as we also have a meeting with, um, uh, Syngenta. We're also working on a couple of business, uh, other business introductions for Jerry, so getting him ingrained in the couple of the employers here. Uh, but outside of that, I think, uh, we're, we're in a good spot and we're headed in the right direction, have a lot of the right pieces in place. I expect, um, you guys all looked at Jerry's work plan, um, but one of the things that's obviously going to be a fast priority. Which we talked about in our strategic planning before we got to the decision to move forward with an administrator. Was capital planning, strategic planning, comprehensive planning. Jerry and Lindsay are getting their arms around what was actually budgeted. There's not great detail in what from the. City Hall was budgeted for, but they're working to see what and how can fit into where, and then if adjustments would be needed to execute some of that, what that would look like. So that we can get to work on some of that. We'll definitely have capital goods, some of the capital needs of the. Um, departments for the next budget discussion at the end of this year. And then we'll also throw into there some of those discussions about those broader, larger capital plans like the resurfacing or. That like sidewalk replacement curb, different things like that, pool fixes, et cetera, community center, library, those type of projects will have deeper discussion about in the coming months. And then, uh, there's been a little bit of chaos here with the water billing, and I just want everybody to know. Um, Lindsay has done a great job here of navigating our. We have found an issue related to the way water meters were set up in our system. They were set up inaccurately if someone had a deduct meter. Um, we don't believe that there's billing errors necessarily with that, um, that we've identified or pinpointed or can see. But the input and the way it was done has created an issue to where meters are not reading, and when we say meters, seventy five meters of, I believe, we have. Uh, do we have four hundred and, no, we have six hundred and some.
Six hundred some, yeah.
So over ten percent of our meters are not reading, and so that's a time consuming reread and et cetera, but Lindsay, I think, has cracked the code and determined what the problem is. Now it's going through and auditing every person's account and making sure that the meters are set up the right way inside of each individual user. So, and then.
Is that a new thing? Because they they were reading. You were reading on the electronic thing.
No, they weren't. They were being estimated. A lot were being estimated. Inexactly.
Um, and then the last thing I would just say is we, or the last two things I would say is we now have our. Go ahead.
What did you just say?
About the meters.
In what?
It appears some of the deduct meters could potentially have been just being estimated as to what they should read versus the actual physical reading. A deduct meter is a meter that people will put into their house for exterior water usage, like lawn watering, irrigation, usages like that.
So not a normal.
Not a normal meter. No.
Pay sewer charge if it's just.
Yes, exactly. Thank you, Sue, for that clarification. That's the big one there. You do not have to pay the sewer. So she's reviewing and looking through that to check. The weird part about our system is you don't designate specifically. Whether it was estimated all the time or whether that was a a reading, once it's typed in retroactively, you can't see that. Um, so we have got that cleaned up and think it's functioning correctly, but it's a, it was a big lift to identify all the accounts with those. And more and more people, almost every new home that's going in on the south side and some of the north side, pretty much everybody's putting the deduct meters into their homes now. So it's becoming a standard two meter system in most houses, so it's going to be something that continues to happen and is a part of new construction that we see. It's good to catch it now and start getting it corrected and fixed. We have our credit cards up and running. Lindsay and Jerry have been meeting with Ramp, the company that we're utilizing. They're working through some test charges right now. Jerry has tried it, I think, felt like it was pretty smooth. He used it for a transaction. Received an immediate email notification, clicked the link, logged in, uploaded his receipt, coded it, moved on. So I think the functionality is where we want it to be from that perspective. We'll continue to optimize it at the end of the months when we have to allocate those expenses into our system. So that's functioning well. And then lastly, the other project that Jerry and Lindsay are going to be working on, that I think is critical, that we want to keep our eye on the ball with. Is our technology adjustment. As you all know, G Works and Simple City, we've been talking about it for over a year now. Will begin to sunset support and the service will just get less and less as they have migrated people into the cloud, their new cloud based product. So they're going to be working in the coming months with that, and so I think just stay tuned. Because we're probably going to have a tech, a bigger technology discussion with our software and how that works. And so if you have thoughts or things that you've been thinking about with technology, one of the things we've talked a little bit about is making sure that we have. Um, resident access to view and see water bills, to pay water bills online directly through their account and have an account access. So they can log in and do those things, electronic work orders, moving from a paper based work order system. If you've never seen our work order system. We have a three copy, um, one of the, I wouldn't even be able to say the terminology correctly because it's not something I grew up using, but. Um, carbon copy papers where we write manual work orders with carbon copies for our public works guys to execute. Uh, items. Um, so looking at some things like that efficiency where we can track and see what work orders and things are being executed, and then we have it from a retention standpoint. That's something where is important. That's all I have right now. Any council questions or any council updates?
I was supposed to say I really appreciate the forward movement and efficiency and good things done. Thank you to both of our new staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How are the developments? Um, Severs Development, any hiccups with? Weeks development. Everything's going good?
Uh, Severs, yeah, has the lots listed right now with a, with a commercial real estate. Um, I'm not aware of anybody that's, uh, like in negotiation or something right now. I think the learning lesson. That I wish I didn't have to learn was, on the front end, when we looked at those development agreements and the incentives. I think we got to be really strategic about, it's one thing to incentivize the developer, but in these commercial and industrial type developments, how do we incentivize the end buyer? And I think with the way we structured the agreement on that setup, I didn't think, I don't think we left ourselves much breathing room to provide specific incentives to. The property purchasers or the commercial businesses that would buy those properties. And I think hindsight being twenty twenty, we maybe would have thought about that a little bit more and tried to balance that so that we had some tools. To provide as incentives to those users, so I think that's a tough spot right now.
I think there was some proposed users that needed to get in there so fast that there was thought to be no time. To spend doing that was was part of the thing was that there was a rush to get that development done, so because there's businesses. Some of like they were lining up in the street to to sign up for lots and.
There was definitely one we were working really hard to, uh, hold on to. Um, so I think they're going really well. Uh, we did Craig, uh, Craig and Julie met with, um. Uh, with Jerry and I last week about some exciting stuff they're working on, so hopefully there's some exciting stuff coming that, uh. Specifically just, uh, getting the pond dedicated to the city. Everybody knows that the, the large pond out there will be dedicated to the city in the end. So we have some legal stuff we need to get done with that. I'd look for that to be on our agenda in September. Hopefully, we want to get, try to get that done. And then I know, I know, uh, in that development specifically, uh, just the discussion about some sports complex progress, I know. The irrig- Iowa irrigation was providing some numbers to Mark about getting that irrigation in that we talked about, I think at the end of last year. Um, we could prove, he discussed that or talked about that or beginning of this calendar year. Uh, to get that irrigation line in so that some irrigation could be put in and so they could do another seed in the fall. So.
The sports thing is.
Expect some more.
As expected. And I think they were going to, they were talking about the seeding this fall, right?
They've seeded everything. Yeah, I think they'd like to have some irrigation. It's worked out to be a good year for it. Um, but I think they'd like to get that irrigation in and get some more seed down on those spots before the end of the year in a perfect world. I know that Mark was going through the process on some quoting to make sure that he could get the water main out there. Because we have to get the water main to a certain spot before we can get the irrigation installed, and the irrigation I'm talking about is specifically just for the soccer fields. So that we can get that grass growing. Obviously, that's a fast, easy, we can deliver soccer fields a lot more economically than what we can deliver the four. Uh, baseball softball fields that we're talking about though. So I, I expect we'll see information about that.
In that vein, we should get a better plan in hand before we proceed too much farther. Right now, we're planning soccer field irrigation, but. I think we need to have a comprehensive plan. That's what we're doing before.
Oh, I think that goes for every project we're looking at in the city. Um.
Because we haven't really flushed that one out real well yet.
Yeah, I, I feel like that about all, most of our projects, so I think that's why we have the staff here to kind of get better at doing that. And just engineers, engineering a few more things, putting strategy and and, uh, using financial tools the right way to try to get things. Done immediately instead of piece by piece by piece by piece over a decade, and then you're on the, uh. Maintenance, by the time you finish the project, you're circling back on the maintenance needs of the stuff you did in the first year, so.
That and one additional comment.
Yeah.
Since you guys are making the generous gift, I think we're making that public gift, but once that officially happens, we should, if we make the scoop cutoff or whatever the next thing is. There. Gift, yeah.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll definitely, we'll definitely have some ribbon cutting and do something at a certain time. We want to be cautious about over publicizing that because the usage of it, the dedication will be legal ownership, but the usage of that pond is not at our discretion at this point. It's at the discretion of the Iowa D N R, who stocks and maintains it and will determine and advise when it's recreational. So we'll definitely get. The right recognition for Craig and Julie.
I think it's good for you. It's going to mark straight our county lineup or water keeps going over that too. I was going to get something taken care of.
You got about five hundred.
Five hundred, yeah. Yeah, it's washing that first house, it's washing their driveway. I don't know how many times it crosses, how many spots it crosses. It's coming from.
Okay.
Field or their drive.
Okay.
So ditch these stuff or colors we put in something. I think that's now city's problem where we've been counting before, but.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Anything else? Alright, resolution number eight. Setting a public hearing at six P M. At city hall on August twenty eight, twenty five for the development agreement between homes by advantage and city of Slater. We've got some revised language back from our last meeting. If you didn't notice in the agenda, which I think is appreciated, is Jerry's put a memo in there on each item, just kind of just give. A quick little history and overview and what the action item is here. Um, I think that's a nice little synopsis before you go into all these legal documents sometimes.
This may just be bad memory on my part. The only thing I didn't remember is we only reimbursed them for fifty percent of their costs.
I didn't remember that part either.
Because I didn't dream that a hundred thousand dollars for the utilities we were reimbursing for fifty. So, but I'm go by memory. I did have time to dig up the original document.
Approved cost as that term is defined in the agreement.
I thought, I thought what we were doing was, was providing some of the infrastructure by, by running the sewer and water to the property.
I thought they did that. We reimbursed them for it.
Yeah, we were reimbursed. I just don't remember that fifty. I don't remember it being fifty percent of the amount.
Because they have to submit the.
Or fifty percent of the approved qualified costs.
That's where it was wrong last.
I thought it was, you know. I thought it was up to fifty thousand dollars of the approved qualified costs.
Right, and I don't remember fifty percent, so I guess it's good for us, but I don't want to back that up.
Roger's going, right?
So I don't think the fifty percent should be in there. That's not.
I can't say candy. I just, I don't remember.
That's not what we were discussing.
No, I didn't think so, but.
This is really the set of hearing and I can have them removed because this document will be on the agenda on the twenty eighth. I just put it in there so that everybody could, this council. But I can raise that as a concern if there's a motion to take it out. We'll have them take it out.
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to comply with what we originally.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to take out the fifty percent, up to fifty percent.
All of those funds were coming from L M I, right?
No, those funds will come out of the, the general fund and be recuperated via TIF.
Just the ten thousand comes out of L M I.
That'll come out of the, that'll come out of the general fund as well. The reason, if you remember from the last meeting, we don't have an L M I program, so we can't just, just disperse those dollars without creating a, a down payment type program. So my understanding was that we'd have to pull those funds out of the, you were at that meeting as well, the general fund, not out of the L M I fund.
You have L M I fund, but not an L M I program?
We don't have the down payment assistance program that we tried to use, and so they said you don't. So I think our TIF should recover the down payment portion of the agreement we've offered and the site and infrastructure portion that we've offered. It'll be a lump sum out of the account up to obviously the seventy thousand dollar total.
Right.
Recuperated via TIF.
The fifty grand being reimbursed via TIF. I didn't remember the other one. I thought that was out of L M I. We're going to make that through the paperwork, so we didn't set a precedent. Until we actually wanted to, but I.
I think the wording is that the intent of the usage is for that, for a buyer like that.
Right.
I think the execution is because of the lack of structure that we have as far as L M I programming goes.
I agree. I don't want to set unintended consequences by setting.
Oh, certainly. I think.
I'm fine with that. I just didn't remember it that way. I thought we.
Right.
Put the burden on them so that we could say we don't have policy yet.
Yeah, this is obvious. I think for everybody, this has been a bit of a learning, um, as we go navigate through this. And I think a broader, longer term L M I strategy would be something that would fold into our comprehensive plan.
Absolutely.
And how we use L M I funds in the future the right way. So. We got the motion from Sean to pull out up to fifty percent.
Yeah, the first part of that.
Okay.
And I'll make sure.
Can you confirm that's actually what we said, though? Because that's my own concern, unless that's just what the council wants to do, that's fine.
I can confirm that we never said we were going to pay fifty percent of qualified costs. We said we would pay up to twenty. We said we would pay up to twenty five thousand dollars per lot with. Documentation of qualified expenses.
That's what I thought.
I I'm positive that's what we said. And that's what we agreed to back at the beginning.
They didn't hit the twenty five thousand. We had it listed as.
See, they. Their their lawyers last time interpreted that if if we didn't, if we didn't hit the fifty thousand, they didn't get anything.
Yeah.
Right. And so. So that part is fixed. It's just I didn't remember the, it was fifty percent of their.
The wording to me looks as if what they did is. And if uh it used to say up to fifty thousand dollars, I think it's almost like they took the percentage off. They deleted a comma, three zeros and put a percentage in there is essentially what changed on it.
As long as everybody else recalls the same thing that was in there, then I'm fine withdrawing like.
Well, I think our intent was up to that twenty five per lot. These ones. No, yeah. Okay, so a first from Sean, a second from Craig. Right, yeah.
Yeah, I'd make sure that it gets corrected for the twenty eighth.
Okay, we've got our first from Sean. We've got our second from Craig. All those in favor for setting that uh for taking it up to fifty percent out of the agreement, the development agreement. Signify with I. Oppose, same sign, and any abstentions. Now I would take a motion to set the public hearing.
Make the motion approved resolution number eight.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify with I. Opposed, same sign, and any abstentions. Discussion and consideration of a motion to rescind resolution number six and resolution number seven adopted on July thirty first, twenty twenty five, calling for special election. Of the change in use of the local sales tax option, tax revenues in the city of Slater. So essentially, all we're doing here is to remove these and then move to the next section to read, to revisit what that language will be. Right, Jerry? Correct. So I'd take a motion here to rescind what we passed at the last council meeting to revisit that in the next action item. First from Sean, second from Sue. All those in favor signify with I. Opposed, same sign, and any abstentions. Okay, discussion and consideration of local sales uh local option, sales and service tax, change in use, resolution nine. Calling for a special election on the question of a change in use of the local option, sales and service tax revenues in the city of Slater. Story Boone County, story county here first, and then we'll do the Boone County uh next. There was. I know. I know there was some homework Jerry went to work on from our last council meeting, some requests. Uh, I know Jerry's provided documentation and responses, I think, on some of that. Is there questions or discussion about that that anybody has? So this uh the the final just. So the ballot language will simply just say. Proposed uses of the tax. If the change is approved, revenues from the sales and service tax shall be allocated as follows. Ten percent for property tax relief. The specific purposes for which the revenue shall otherwise be expanded are ninety percent for lawful purpose. Including but not limited to city hall facilities, community center facilities, library facilities, other capital projects. Retirement of debt incurred for any such purpose and any other lawful purpose. At the last meeting, I would just say, I think we were all kind of in agreement that it would be really nice if we could shrink that down to be ninety percent for any lawful purpose. To keep it broad and useful for decades to come. I think the attorney's direction was you should be specific about what the intent and the projects are that you're looking to potentially use the funds for. So that would be the adjustment. And then at the bottom, it just tells what the current use of the taxes. So the public measure will just look like that on the ballot with a yes or no and then that. Uh, section that I just read. Any discussion or questions or a motion to approve that? I can get you a copy of that. We didn't get it pulled up on the.
Yeah.
We didn't get it pulled up on the, for some reason, our scan didn't scan it all in every page.
I mean, we approve the order.
Second.
Sean Burtle with Sean Burtle at the first came in with the second. All those in favor signify with I. Oppose, same sign, and any abstentions. Okay, we're looking at the same issue here for the county of Boone County since we sit in two counties. Boarding, I believe, is the exact same, just on two different counties. Sue first, Sean second. All those in favor signify with I. Oppose, same sign, and any abstentions. Okay, now we're gonna go into resolution eleven, setting a public hearing at six P M. City Hall, September eighth, twenty twenty five. To adopt the twenty twenty one international buildings and related codes.
Have to be done as they update international codes. I know we've done this.
Yeah, the current code that the city operates under is two thousand six. And according to safe building, we're like the only client that they have that hasn't updated. Codes, so it'd be the building. Plumbing, electrical. H vac.
They change those codes every year.
There is a, there is, there is some newer versions of the code, right?
Yeah, and it's probably not common to, you know, uh um follow every year, but. Yeah, every so.
More often than once every nineteen years.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly. And this is just a set of hearing for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it's an ordinance adoption.
Right. I think the one thing that I guess I just want to make sure that is uh. That's in here too, is that we're talking about is we're also uh the discussion there is also around.
That's a separate measure though.
The uh. Trade permit.
Yeah, that'd be a separate line item coming agenda.
Number eleven.
Resolution eleven, setting the public hearing.
Second from Craig Conley. All those in favor signify with I. Oppose, same sign, and extensions. So now the discussion uh on the trade building permit costs from seventy five to one hundred at the recommendation of safe building.
Mention it in your verbiage that a copy of the fee structure was attached. But if it was.
In the contract. Being the contract scheduled to be serviced.
I must not print page.
There might be a copy there.
I want to clarify what I'm understanding.
Yes.
Safe building is asking us to bump up our trade permits from seventy five dollars to a hundred dollars. That will all go to safe building.
Correct.
Are we looking at adding an additional amount onto that? That would go to the city of Slater or kind of building trade permits? We're just leaving it at a hundred for now. Which one was it?
Um, that amount would stay the same. We're we're not asking for an increase on the trade permits, which it include plumbing, electrical, mechanical, building permits.
Wait, wait, wait. We are asking for a change.
Well. Correct, but none of that would go to the city.
And that's.
Some cities would attach an amount onto that for the city's processing cost. We're we're not in that. That's not what's. If we wanted to, we could right now.
Right.
We're not. There is in a, I think the next.
But we are looking to increase.
The next question is about the. Not tacking on. We'll clarify that in a second. Yeah.
Not adding. We'll be getting a portion of the existing uh. Systems, but they are proposing two changes and I'll I'll highlight those.
Okay, that was clear that. So I just wanted to clarify that's what was happening. Thank you.
Is there any questions about that change?
Go ahead, Joe.
When you uh issue one of these permits. You said uh the same permit for someone building a garage and someone building a business. Seven hundred dollar fees, the same, no matter what.
So when does someone get a trade permit?
Yeah.
This is a building permit.
Like running new electrical lines, um, you know, within the house or the business, um. Plumbing work to a house or a business. Um, but if it's like new construction or renovation, you're adding on to your house or your business. Then it would be this additional fee structure that would apply. Otherwise, it's more of a trade permit, which is. Uh, smaller scale projects.
Professional works in your house. They should be submitting a trade permit because I didn't, I don't know this.
Uh, yes, yeah, it's more they're smaller scale projects, but something that would prompt the need for it to be reviewed. By safe building and inspected.
Okay.
The trade person will have a pretty good idea of what.
Yeah.
What they would need to pull a permit for versus if they're just changing an outlet or.
Right.
Something really minor.
Yeah, if you're running new service, plumbing, electric, mechanical, then that's usually a permit.
I want three new plugins in my living room. You gotta run wire behind the wall, then they get some.
Let's be honest, most people are doing that and not coming in to get their trade.
We don't want to encourage.
Just call a spade a spade.
Well, it's a benchmark. This is pretty typical with what other towns would do.
Um, yeah, that's in fact, some of the communities that they mentioned, they actually add additional fees, but we're not as staff, we're not recommending that unless the city council. Sees a need.
This fee structure in the.
Yeah, then trade permits are pretty common. We get quite a few of those compared to some of these other larger scale project permits. And they they're claiming it's to take care of, you know, their cost or, you know, run here and sometimes somebody. More than one inspection, so. There are several trucks that are involved sometimes.
Right, and Mark's not here, so we're wishing, but everybody's in chat, you say build, I don't know.
I don't think everybody's always thrilled with it.
I've been here a month.
That's what I say. I didn't know if you had a chance to talk to Mark.
Um, honestly, I need to get a handle on like our process because all the permits are submitted here in addition to the fee. And there's still a discovery process on how we're dealing with that because it's not done electronically. Um, if it were done electronically, I think would be a lot easier to kind of ascertain what the process is. Um, so right now, I'm I'm, you know, we get the information in from the contractor, from the homeowner. Permit, the drawings, and then I we have to check to make sure that the fee gets submitted before we actually submit it to some.
Okay.
And I would just.
You know, we're going through that.
And I would just note that we're really kind of entering, what we're all, the only thing we're agreeing to is essentially a thirty day contract. That takes thirty days notice to cancel the contract. So with thirty days notice, we could, I'll tell you, we have reached out and started the conversation with V and K. As an alternative to, and and we will, when the times are, accept that discussion up. It just didn't feel like. At this time, a big enough glaring problem to try to take that project on on top of the others that.
No, and that's.
But we're definitely gonna evaluate this. Our code enforcement contact works for V and K as well, so um that we've partnered with. So I think it's, we have an opening to a discussion and we should have it, at least for leverage, but. The contract has a thirty day notice requirement in it, so.
No, sounds good.
We should be able to term if we feel appropriate based on a change. And I think technology will dovetail into that too, the management of it.
Yep. And Jerry, your suspicions about flow through being an actor.
Well, it's just trying to understand what our process is.
I just know that we're deficient.
We'll get to the bottom of it.
Yeah, Joe, I think a comment.
I'd boom, just go with Brad. And that wasn't real. The process was pretty shake as far as a permit. The information I got from safe bill and the city didn't really tell me what I really needed to do. To get the burn inspection process done properly. And um.
I mean, like at what points you would call safe bill to show up and and inspect.
Yeah, and. I'm not. I hate to. I hate to be inspected more, but I'm not sure that the city got what they paid for.
That's fair.
I've already run into it sort of this conversation.
Yeah.
I can see.
I did, I tried to do the building properly. And I did, but the the inspection process was not.
Yeah.
Yeah, did you add electric and plumbing? Cause that could be a separate inspection. Usually this. Prior to pouring is an inspection, then usually a final at the end. So usually with most garage type projects, you're looking at three inspections. At at a minimum.
And Joe, I'll keep you out of hot water. When mine was done, which was a while back. Uh, I spent quite a bit of money and I had a eighteen year old kid there for less than five minutes. So our our. Professionalism of inspections was maybe not.
Yeah, and I think uh I think at the moment, I think we got to remind ourselves really quick that. We're essentially outsourcing the liability associated with this to a third party. To review and ensure that the structures that are being built meet the codes and are compliant from an electrical and plumbing standpoint. I think we have chose not to take that in-house and take that inherent risk on purpose. And I think we can evaluate the professional partner and what they charge to do those reviews and things. But I think unless we're looking at considering or looking at the process of having our own engineer. Um, I think we're a little bit beholden to the services available to us. And then the last part about Joe, some of this experience too, Joe, I think is we can just do a better job from our website. To our face-to-face communication, to the permitting paperwork we hand you to provide better information upfront. To somebody who comes in here and gets a permit, that's a resident that's executing a job on their own or self-performing. We can vastly improve the information we give to residents as far as how to go through this process. Um, to help, because I think we do have a role in some of that of like, hey, here's. There's no reason why I frequently ask questions or a when to call and who to call. She can't be created to support.
When you're paying your state bill or whoever. To do that, that they shouldn't have that information provided.
And they may have. That they may have that. They may have that information together. I'll tell you the permit.
At one point, I had I had come down and asked for.
Our permit process will improve.
Well, it was, it was a bad time too, so.
Our permit process will improve. Currently, we keep them in a red binder and track them that way and it's email based. And they come back in emails to tell us when it's approved or not. And then I know personally that I wasn't notified when my permit was approved for a certain project, so. Our notification and tracking process is um going to be updated and improved and optimized. To provide a better experience to the residents. And that will lean on safe building to give us some structure for that. But the execution of that between Jerry and Lindsay will get better from when you come into this building to get a building permit. They're committed to making it a better experience, a clearer experience where you feel like you know what you need to do. And if you don't, you know exactly who to call. So.
The money that you're spending on safe. A better return on investment.
And I think we can get more support. I think we can get some more support out of them. Sean first, Greg second. All those in favor signify with a sign of I. Oppose, same sign, and any extensions. The the next discussion is just about.
Last page on there, he talks about uncommitted building nuisance and more developed from that. Are they doing any of that?
They have done one of those for me on a property. We could request that on any safe building we wanted.
But we have our own nuisance.
Correct, but what we could also do, we can use them to write the report as well. They charge us on an hourly basis as well to do that.
Right.
But they can determine like unsafe or or condemnable type properties um based on our code. We have the nuisance.
And then do they work with our nuisance control? And then do they work with our nuisance control outsourced company to recollect that money from? We pay so, that, that we pay safe bill, how does that?
We'll use one or the other when it comes to those type of nuisances, the nuisance.
Safe bill doesn't do anything to collect, that's all collected through us.
Correct.
So. We don't have, we don't have a lot of, we don't have great system or leverage to collect from a. From somebody who's already a building nuisance or working without a permit or unsafe situation. Seems like we need to have them work with our nuisance.
No, we just won't use, we just won't use, um. Them for building, we just want you safe building for building nuisances, we'll use our code enforcement.
This is like.
Yeah, this is right, I understand it, but I, but I'm just saying there'd be, I can see instances where you would want more. Professionalism than what a nuisance abatement company can do with a backup of. A written thing from Safe Bill, we just need to have those working together so that if, if we. If, if they look at something that's considered unsafe, we can't, we can't do a lot about that without having some confirmation in writing from Safe.
No, we can't. Our code enforcement can give us that, because our code defines what unsafe is. So they'll just read exactly what our code defines unsafe as with photos of the structure, the way it is, what it is. They then will write the report and it'll come from.
Nuisance of.
Nuisance abatement guy, and we can use that report to begin the process. I, I think the difference between, um, safe buildings, uh, nuisance of it, nuisance stuff, there is pretty much. Buildings specifically, not trees, not shrubs, not the things we're talking about junk in yards.
Right.
But they can also do building, uh, they, they, Safe Building wants to do buildings, our guy that we've hired, Harrison, he can do everything across the board from our code. So he could do any of that, I mean, he specifically asked in our meeting, he said, do you have an ordinance about cars parked over sidewalks? Do you want me to enforce when I see cars parked in the front yard on sidewalks or you, so. We would only use these guys if there was a, a, I guess, a weird reason, but.
For example, did it three twenty-one or three?
Uh, they looked at it, yeah. Yeah, they looked at, um. They looked at a dilapidated property on the northwest side of town for us and wrote a report back for, um. Previous staff and myself. And we tried to address that a little bit, and then that's when we got down the road of let's just hire a third party to execute and start the legal documentation process. Yes. So the fee structure, here is the next que, next item on the agenda. Um, and I think the difference that I wanted to clarify with Jerry, cause I was, I'm just, I was really blown away and confused by this, cause it didn't make sense to me, right about. Essentially that we could get percentages of the permitting fees as a city to keep as, as portions for our expenses associated with it. And I know that we use a third party to do plan review and a lot of things like that. But the permits come in and get manually filled out handwritten here at City Hall or emailed here or dropped off here. We get the checks, we deposit the checks, we have to account for those checks and then send those, send a check. On a monthly statement to safe buildings every month, so we have quite a bit of manual labor associated with the permitting process, even though we don't do any of the. Actual issuance of the permits or the approval of the permit. We're doing a little zoning review on it, um, Jerry now is, and, and so. I was confused at first about how we could get paid without increasing what the building permits costs were. But according to Safe Build and the conversations, conversations Jerry has had. We're one of the only cities they work, the only city they work with that doesn't get a percentage of what the building, final building permit cost is. So what's happening here and proposing in the structure there, and I have a copy of what the old one looked like. But essentially they used to, and in that agreement that you guys are looking at on the fee structure there, when you see that's. That far right side where it says safe building fee, um, and it's just a, a document that looks like this, guys, on the safe building fee. On the old schedule we had with them, it just says a hundred percent all the way down the line. Now, I would just bring the attention to the locations that are changing, um, and those locations are the five hundred. A project, a total valuation of the project between five hundred and one dollars to two thousand dollars and two thousand and one dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars. The adjustment that they're recommending there is moving from what used to be fifty dollars for the first five hundred. To one hundred for the first five hundred. And then the rate after the first five hundred on the five hundred and one to two thousand is two seventy-five, remaining the exact same. And then the two thousand and one to twenty-five thousand is going from what used to be permit fee fifty dollars for the first two thousand. Plus twelve fifty for additional. The only change that's being made here is one fifty for the first two thousand, so they're moving that one up a hundred dollars. In that section, in the fee schedule. Every other section is in continuity, so projects. That have a cost associated with twenty-five thousand and one dollars or above would have the same permitting costs as they do. Last year, but the city of Slater will retain twenty-five percent of that permit cost. And Safe Building will only get seventy-five percent of it. Projects between five hundred and one dollars and twenty-five thousand dollars. Will now have an increase on the first five hundred of the first two thousand of fifty dollars for the first five hundred. And then on the second, uh, level of project above two thousand and one dollars, the first two thousand will be a hundred and fifty dollars.
What's seventy-five?
And that one used to be fifty and it's moving, the first, the projects on our old fee schedule, projects from. One hundred to five hundred, five hundred and one to two thousand, two thousand and one to twenty-five thousand, the first five hundred was essentially fifty dollars. And then they had a dollar amount per. Additional hundred dollars or per additional thousand dollars. That's where the change on this fee schedule goes, but when you think about, uh, we just had a really large building permit. A couple months ago for a project west of town, and I think the permitting associated with that was a five-digit number. So, I think, I think that permit was forty-eight thousand dollars. Um, for that project that Syngenta did. That project would fall into that, I think that was over a million dollar project, so thirty percent of that building permit would be retained by the city moving forward. Which would be twelve grand. Versus safe building taking it all. So I think the key I wanted to clarify was, we obviously heard complaints earlier this year about the cost of building permits. Um, from two, one, one person reached out to me, Jen, I think at the time, had another person that had complained, maybe the same person, um. But this wasn't gonna increase what the costs are with the building permits outside of the discussed categories.
And well, I feel athletic for the person that is building something. If we don't cover our costs, then the people who aren't building something are paying a subsidy, so.
All right, I'll take a motion then to, uh, to go ahead and. Uh, approve Slater to receive a part of the building permit application fee revenue.
We do the, we do the, oh, so this was just a discussion.
Are you guys good with executing this service agreement? We did that. Are you guys good with accepting the service agreement? Okay, first Sue, second Craig.
Guys, be sad if I didn't say this, um, on the first page, it's twenty twenty-four, so.
Okay. Sue first, Craig second, all those in favor signify with a sign of I. Oppose, same sign, and any extensions. Okay. Discussion and consideration. Of parks and rec board recommendations pertaining to city parks.
The rate changes or that's discussion and will be resolution later.
What's that?
We just, that's what we just.
We're all getting, yeah. Yep, we've accepted the service agreements, that covers the fee structure. So the park and re, uh, board recommendations, Jonathan, you're here, uh, Jer, Jerry has written a nice little memorandum about some of the. The requests. I got my packets split up into two pieces now. So basically, here's, here's the, here's the bullet points of this. Consider, uh, installing a sign near the intersection of South Tenth Street and Marshall Street to inform users at South Park. That there is parking space located adjacent to the basketball court, sounds like, uh. Obviously, people are going down that dead end into this wastewater treatment plant, they park there during soccer practice all the time, I mean. We drive our golf cart down there with the kids to play on the playground, um. There's one item, move or relocate the horseshoe pit located at Nelson Park, um. Was kind of a suggestion or conversation point, and then striping of the tennis court, uh, tennis court for pickleball. Striping in addition to tennis striping for a pickleball court, so it would be a dual-purpose court to test. There's been interest in adding pickleball courts in the city of Slater, this would give. The potential ability to get out there and test usage on some of the pickle, on the painted court to see what usage was like. I asked whether the, a tennis net is different than a pickleball court net, I assume.
It is, um, the, the tennis net. It wouldn't be an official pickleball net if, if works as such, but the, uh. Pickleball net, the, the sag and the, the, the height is just a little bit different. And we figure we'll be able to lower that, the net, the current net enough to where. It'll get them what they need.
Okay.
Would that screw up the, like, high school playing there?
Jerry did a nice job at the recommendation of Park and Rec, and I do have an email. From the great, I must say, the phenomenal women's tennis coach at Ballard, who doesn't happen to be any relation. Um, and, uh, she was supportive, um, was okay with it, she just wanted to clarify that it wasn't removing the tennis court lines, it was just. And that's Jen Goffrey.
Yeah.
And she is, uh, she was, I think, not. Just do it, at the end of the day, there are courts, but I think, uh, we did the right thing, reached out and was supportive, so I.
And I think the idea is that we try one of the three courts and monitor to see how many people are using the pickleball.
With this in our annual, um, meeting due to, um, just, uh. People bringing it up as a possible option for the future, and, and we've had discussions generally about. You know, from a long-term planning standpoint, do we want to put a pickleball court in, and there's been some. Uh, interest within the community as to wanting to help with that type of a project. But we feel like data is important and this is a good option. For eight months out of the year to provide something, it might not be perfect, but there'll be lines, there'll be offense or, uh, you know.
Playable.
Yeah, and it'll be playable, it'll be something that, that people can do, it's already lighted, so. I, I think this is a good option, um, and so, yep, and I appreciate Jerry reaching out. Uh, and making that connection just to kind of make sure that she was brought into the loop on that, and so. If there's any other questions, it was brought to our attention that folks, when they tend to park, um, down at South Side, they will. Uh, instead of backing out, they'll basically kind of drive down into the park down and, and make a U E, and so. Um, the discussion was, well, initially, should we be, um, trying to help direct traffic to make sure they know that. If they just jump across the creek, um, that there is parking over there. I don't know that that'll stop it, but at the end of the day, it's at least additional information, I mean, I think we could entertain perhaps some. You know, no parking on a grass signs or something like that along that too, I, I don't know, um, but at the end of the day. I feel like it's probably, uh, uh, it's. Relatively painless and it provides a little more information about the park, which I think is good, um. Going forward, the, uh, we have a good deal of pitches for, um. Uh, shooting horseshoes throughout the city now and in the parks, and I think that was a goal a long time ago, um. And Sean, maybe he was on the board with me then, I don't know, when, when those discussions were had about trying to get one within each of the. The reality is Nelson Park is very much a multi-use park, and there is some increased traffic now from children that are. Uh, younger, that just live in the neighborhood, and so. I guess the idea being that there needs to be some, some open green space for them to play. Um, football, toss the ball, that kind of thing, we actually, um, did have a person reach out, um. And had an injury, uh, where their child had fell and hit their head on the, uh. The backstop, and so the thought was, can we provide a green space, um. And, and still maybe consider moving that, whatever, whatever Mark feels would be best, if there is a good place where it's not gonna be in the way from a Fourth of July. Perspective and those kinds of things, otherwise, we're, I think our recommendation is just removal. Um, because there are other options within the city. Any other questions, I guess, feel free to ask.
So does anybody have, everybody's good with the pickleball court marking, right, nobody has major concerns about that, that would prevent the parking rec from. And Jerry from moving forward and executing that with. The, how does everyone, so I think, I'm hearing consensus on that, so we can green light that. The horseshoe pit at Nelson Park, any thoughts on that from council or?
Has anybody seen it played?
I've never seen that one played.
Horseshoes is only, is best played when others are asleep. Touche, Erica.
Obviously, I went too far away, so I don't see him there, but there's the one kind of across from our house, and I've never seen someone use.
I've never seen him get used.
Horseshoes out there, they disappeared but never got used. So, if, if there's a risk of somebody, because of the horse, where it was, if something really bad would happen, they could land it on the. Horseshoe stake, so if we're gonna keep it, it would be good to, apparently there's some kind of covers that they throw.
I say we just remove it, it sounds like, you say you've never seen it used, we wanna keep the ones in Grim Park, right, utilize those in the Fourth of July.
But I think besides that, I don't think any of them are really used that often, I don't wanna lose them for the fourth, but I don't think it's a.
Yeah. John, and Nelson would be fine.
You guys would be the ones that would.
I have not seen anybody in the, all the years I've, since it's been installed, I, I have not. I, I would not say that, I mean, it's nice to have options when families have reunions. But it seems like, uh, Nelson Park, or at least, uh, the law cabinet has used a lot for birthday parties, these kinds of things, there's probably not a lot of. Use to where people are, uh, I mean, there was a, somebody put up a volleyball net here a few weeks back, I noticed in the park there for their.
And I think you're, you just would like counsel, you'd like us to move forward with removing them, that's.
It's, it's removal unless Mark feels like there's a good place, uh, but I don't think we need it.
There was, was he talking about Mark painting the ones in Grim Park better, is that the ones he was talking about painting?
That was for pickleball? That was just a recommendation to monitor to see if that, cause I don't know if they're just not visible, cause the, I think there was kids playing.
If they were gonna stay to mark them to identify.
As an option. Cause it's probably just natural wood, right?
The Grim one, Grim Park ones are not in the middle of nowhere, like the one at Nelson Park.
Yeah, there's three, there's three at Grim Park and one at the South Park and then one at Nelson, so I say, we spend less time just debating over the.
We voted to.
I think we have consensus here to remove that, I think we're just greenlining it as council.
We voted to remove, but we did, we did leave it into Mark's discretion that he felt like there was a better place that, that he wanted to keep it, but.
And I think just for clarity, obviously, part of the reason this is kind of coming and you're getting these reports now on these type of things is when. And I think just for clarity, obviously, part of the reason this is kind of coming and you're getting these reports now on these type of things is when you read and look at our code. The Park and Rec Board is kind of an advisory-based board where they should be bringing these type of recommendations to us, but at the end of the day, the city council really should be. At, at the, signing their name to, we're the ones that made this, executed this decision. It wasn't just Park and Rec acting independently of council. So that's why you're seeing this, but I'm, I'm supportive of it. So let's remove that. I've heard uh support from all council.
I'd love to see good publicity when you get the pickleball done, like give it a scoop or whatever.
That's my goal. I think that, and we do have a couple of Eagle Scout projects, um, that are gonna be fairly visible. Um, one in the Dog Park, um, and then uh one down at Grim Park putting in a brand new uh Gaga Ball Pit. Um, that, and the Parks and Rec Board is putting forward some, some, some support. It's gonna be a very nice thing. So all in all, I want to make sure that we're getting that information out more. We get maybe some pictures, we try and get and, and display that. So I agree.
And Jonathan Gaga Balls, like dodgeball?
Yeah.
Where you play within a corral area.
Right, it's in a corral area. They, they throw the ball at each other. Um, but it's on, on the ground. It has to stay on the ground. So uh. The, the idea being that uh it's heavily played in the younger ages and. You know, people use the pool in the summer of Grim. Um, a lot of the daycares use that space, so. Seem like the best place to put it where the daycares can use it.
Perfect. We'll look forward to those updates and if you need help uh marketing or getting public announcement out, once our, our utility billing clerk starts, we'll get her astute with that. Ability to post and market things, so we'll.
We're talking about Parks and Rec, is that, how's this? I guess I'm just unfamiliar with, why is that department set up different than our other departments? So they, they have no budget. Um, it seems like our other departments have a little more autonomy. I would think you would want it.
I don't have the code right in front of me right now, but it goes back to the way our code's written.
For the code, so hopefully.
It should be a department that has a, that has a budget and can make some decisions.
Yeah, but the city council created the Parks and Rec Board, so they're created by the city council. And so.
Okay.
They, that kind of puts them into the recommendation um format. Was that pretty typical? And part of this is my interpretation of the code.
Typically how they're organized?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's still, I think at the end of the day, it's obvious that they still operate with autonomy to make decisions, bring decisions. I think it's rare that we'll probably overturn or not agree with decisions and if we do, we'll figure out the impasse, how to navigate the impasse, but.
I don't have a problem with our, uh, with, with these things being run past you all.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, uh.
Yeah, I think.
We'll continue to do what we're doing and probably in the same capacity unless somebody tells us any difference where we're. Long-range planning and we're trying to put forth an effort there and we're a little bit, we're wanting to. As the city improves, we'll, we're going to be improving as well. I do know that we kind of started a, a somewhat of a budgeting process this last year, but. It's still somewhat informal and there's been some change within city staff, so that's gonna look different in this upcoming year.
No, I'm good. I'm not trying to stir up trouble. I just, it just seems odd to me that they.
I think it only seems odd.
Things they do doesn't have a budget.
I think it's, well, they do, they do kind of get budgeted items and funded through.
There's some.
There, there's some budgets, they have some rollover.
Funnel through for other things, yeah.
The code basically kind of spells that out, that they don't, their spending should be approved by council for the most part. Um, whether that's through a budget process or independently done, but I think that's one thing Jerry uh is doing a lot of. And I think sometimes it feels weird is just. You know, he's looking, if something comes up, he's checking the code first for what, what the code says and how we should handle it. And then dictating how to handle it. So that's why some of this feels different. Um, and then the last one we didn't discuss was just the sign, South Tenth Street and Marshall Street to inform users. Yeah, I, I guess I was thinking, um, it's pretty much just the soccer club only uses that field for practice, right? So it's soccer practice only. Are they doing games now? Okay, they are doing games.
I mean, that, that ebbs and flows based off of what kind of condition the field is in, so they try and. They might take a season off um to give that a chance to, to heal up and they'll. Push that somewhere else wherever they can, um, but you can imagine then that, you know, if they take off spring, that fall, they're probably gonna start playing games there again.
So, yeah, one thing I would just say about the signage is I think it's logical to notate that there's a park, available parking lot. You know, that's hidden from where the proximity to that field is. This opens just a broader conversation that I think needs to be a part of the next. Count or the next calendar year execution or budgeting processes. We did the community visioning project where we went through and we, part of that, that process was about communication and transportation. And there was a lot of signage and design and work done associated with where to put wayfinding signs and information. I think you look at the welcome signs coming into Slater, I think they're getting a little more dilapidated and outdated. I think we need a broader, we need, we need a group that's willing to tackle the broader signage in our community. And we've heard that from businesses about Main Street signage. I think this falls into some of that as well as park signage. I'm not sure who the right owner of that project is, but I think we should almost have a full assessment done by residents or a resident or. Uh, uh, I know other, sometimes other, other councils will come and give feedback or whatever. I don't care how it gets executed. But I think we should have a broader analysis of our signage, use our community visioning. We should probably roll out a plan to improve signage. In this area, but every, everywhere through town and entering town, I think would be nice.
You made the request of us uh in, in part for some of that. And so I know that a couple of our folks, I think, have gone around and taken a look. Amy Carlson, um, in a conversation we had just a week or so ago, um, took note. And she has a few suggestions, but.
Yeah.
I agree, it's probably, should be broader than just a, a couple of us going out and looking.
Yeah, we have a great partner business here in town that will help us print signs and do it extremely economical. Um, we'll obviously look at costs, obviously with a magnifying glass when it comes to that, but they're willing to help us and can. Print those signs on demand for us. So I think it's more of an execution and an analysis of what it costs and they can. Print us whatever we want. The pool, I think, could use a new sign that meets the format. So I think there's a, and I'd be happy to help with that. Um, and I know others would be.
Need improved signage around the, the bike trail.
Yeah, inconsistency.
These kinds of things, so.
Yeah, and I think consistency, which is the community visioning, did a nice job in their sign design of that. So.
Me living down there, a suggestion, I wouldn't do much more. And don't park on the grass. That just seems like something Mark's got a weed whacker.
Yeah.
So I don't think you'll stop them anyway, so. But the scientist says there is parking on the other side of the creek, might do some good.
Yeah.
And Jerry, what did you mean by adding ninety-degree parking?
I thought that was part of the discussion, like, because people are parking on one that drive.
Yeah, there's not enough space to turn sideways, isn't it?
Yeah.
Filling, doing fill.
Yeah, you have to watch it.
Yeah, they really shouldn't park there at all, but they just do, um.
Well, there's no parking lot.
I mean, again, you could put a no parking sign there, uh, whether people will listen.
Yeah, yeah, the only thing. Yeah, the only thing I think that comes up that is a viable complaint potentially is if. The alleyway that's between the houses and the sheds on Tenth is a privately owned alleyway, right? By all of you, maintained and owned privately, is if there's constant traffic and destruction to that, then I think it becomes a. It becomes a more of a problem to us, I think, or that we need to address, in my opinion.
There's, there's destroyed, not that many to go through there.
Okay.
They, they sometimes think our fate's a public shit, because they'll just drive in the driveway.
Yep.
But it's an exception, not a rule, so I'm not too worried about traffic, don't you? I just don't want to drive another part, ruin all the grass.
Okay, so we'll just, it does say now, not a through street, so we'll kind of hold there, but we'll figure out how to tackle this broader signage. Not a big lift, it just takes time, I think. There was a quick legislative update in here, Jerry. Did you want to highlight a few things? And then I will just say, I asked um Jerry and Lindsay to reach out to the Iowa League of Cities and ask them to have. The government liaison come up and present to us at our next regular council meeting. About what happened in the last session and what bills are gonna be the priorities of the next session, just something new that I think we should be aware of. Some of the bills and some of the targets around TIF and the way it works um are gonna be things that are of interest to us. So I think we should be aware of those things, but Jerry, did you have a few that you?
You should have a copy of this, which is the new laws of interest that the League of Cities puts out after every legislative session in May. One of the things, I think it's already been discussed, is House File seven oh six, which requires. All newly elected or appointed officials to take uh training, like the one to two-hour training class. Within ninety days of being appointed, so it would also include all the boards and commissions. And this is the city council members, um, and it talks about a certification. Or a certificate that would need to be obtained from the Iowa Public Information Board. So again, that's House File seven oh six. House File six fifty-two, which is on the next page, gives, um, it kind of lessens or loosens the. Um, evaluation criteria for city board of adjustments. Uh, previous standard that was used was unnecessary hardship rule, which was pretty uh cumbersome, pretty difficult to achieve that. Uh, to allow a variance to be granted, uh, but this lessens that to something they call dimensional variances. Which primarily deals with setbacks, lot sizes, height and so on. And so it goes on to say, the, let's see, the zoning rules creates practical difficulties for the landowners. Uh, there's a problem to the, the uniqueness of a property and it's not self-created by the applicant or the owner. So again, kind of a relaxing of what the standard has been for, I think, a long, long time. Reduced retention fees for public improvement contracts, uh, most public. Uh, contracts have retention fees that are a part of those contracts. And there was a reduction from five percent, which I think is kind of a standard amount to three percent. So likely the.
Contractors.
Contractors uh were active there on that bill.
And that's. Before punch lists, things are not.
That's additional retention fee. Um, what's that, toward the end of the project, um, how much you can actually hold back from.
This is to get, what you can hold back to get the punch list fully executed.
That's right, they got a good lobby.
So from five percent.
Love would just walk away.
Right. Um, one that I got my attention was Senate File five ninety-two, ADUs, which is accessory drilling units. So every city throughout the state of Iowa. Uh, property owners that have accessory structures can convert them to living quarters. Uh, provided that they meet building code requirements, so the cities can require that, but you can't require anything. Um, more strict or stringent than would be required for a single-family home. And most of these laws go into effect like the first of the year, uh, July one. Uh, so this is something that we need to get working on, I think, um, fairly quickly.
To make sure there's our code lines, you mean?
Exactly. Because this provides, um, you know, benefits to property owners who want to convert.
This is the California law, Jerry called it to me.
Well, this is where I first heard about it.
Too much money, so.
Yeah, you know, in California, it's pretty prevalent there.
Jerry, so how does it work? Like, I know our code is, currently does not allow for ADUs. And now we are required by the state, state to allow for that. Do we have to change our code? Or is it just de facto the state law?
We have to make an amendment to our code to allow this to be.
This would also apply to building a new structure in a backyard, right?
Yeah, existing or new.
Okay.
You just attach a trailer to your house.
Well, no, not that.
Yes.
Yeah, there's exceptions for like historic buildings, um. Talks about uh co-ops or HOAs, if they have restrictions on it.
Permanent foundation, I don't know, blocks are permanent.
Permanent foundations, it's a block.
I would think that the League of Cities would be putting something out that kind of helps cities with.
Our codification. Iowa codification would obviously, Simmer and Corey would have standard language that they'll be putting in everybody's code update, I'm sure, too. Joe, you raise your hand.
Match with the, our IRC code, your. Building, building, you just. Said you were gonna adopt.
Right, they would have to meet all the building code requirements, so most accessory structures are built for like, what is referred to as cold storage. And so you would be.
Provision for that? So why would you need to change your laws if the building code already says you can do that?
It says how you can do it, not whether you can or not. So if you are gonna build a, a, a dwelling in your backyard, the code tells you, our code, which we have to adjust.
What you can do.
But tell you how you can do it.
The building code tells you how you can do it.
What you have to do to.
How many plugins and what kind of wiring, all those things.
You've got a code that says you can't do it right now.
The zoning, the zoning codes would not allow it now, but the state law would require us to amend it so that it can be done.
So that garage you just built, you could probably get fifteen hundred a month out of that. If.
If he converts it.
You want to go through the permit process again.
Would you want us to shore up and have more people come to your house?
No, that thing is bigger than the standard garage, so we are in a meat code.
So three grand, maybe.
Yeah, there you go.
You can get a couple of.
All right, Jerry, what else?
We'll get a deeper in-depth.
I don't think we have an issue with our code there. House File two ninety-seven, dual role for volunteer emergency providers. And city council members provides for situations where they could be compensated for volunteering for EMS. Um, which I think honestly, that already happens, at least the community that I worked in, they were compensated for assistance that they provided. This provides that revenue and then. The fire chief mentioned, I think at his update on the fifteenth of July, this length of service award program. Which I think he's doing some initial um eval- evaluation on, um. But it provides a mechanism, if it's supported by city council, to create uh like a retirement fund for volunteer firefighters and emergency responders. Right, right. Will be administered by the. And it would be a dollar for a dollar, up to five hundred dollars per participant annually.
You know any inner workings of that in terms of how you apply for the matching?
I do not.
Onto that, I do not. I figured it's kind of early for that. And then same thing on, on under city financing, SF six nineteen. Million dollars to allocate two million dollars to nuisance property remediation assistance fund. Nuisance properties, go down at the bottom, SF six nineteen, under city financing. That's not gonna go very far when you get a thousand communities in the state, but um. I assume sooner you're in, you know, what, where.
If it's a good project.
Understands and jumps in right first, it might help with our, with our problem at the northeast part of town. Some of the treasures need to be pulled out of there. Maybe that. It took. The year.
Weeks, eight, nine months.
The official procedures took at least eight, nine months to get it out of there.
Some of them not even lived in.
Yeah.
They look, they look pretty bad shape.
Yeah. So anyway, just finding out what that would take, might be helpful for that property. So anyway, just finding out what that would take might be helpful for that property.
SF six fifty-nine, last page of. Is that gonna be serious, they're gonna look into making emergency services?
Just doing a study, at this point, it's just a study.
So is that just a waste of ink or is that any kind of serious?
Just a study at this point. There's not, there's nobody that's very committed to that.
Okay.
I don't think, but.
There has been talk about that though, I mean, I think that's a real thing.
There's some counties that pass on their own, but.
Yeah, which is fine, I just don't like me.
Okay, so we'll we'll get some more insight from their rep when they get them here to give us an update, hopefully at the next meeting. So the last item was the discussion and consideration of the city staff work program. Jerry, did you want to introduce this?
Yeah, just briefly, that's something that I talked about when I interviewed and um I can tell you that I've met with department heads. Uh some of the boards and and chair, uh board and commission chairs. And some of the city council and the mayor about this. And you know, after a month of working, um came up with a list of approximately nine twenty-nine items. Um some of these things are likely gonna fall to the capital improvement plan that we're gonna start in October. Um before we get into the budget process. Um five of these would be, well, actually twelve of these things would, we're gonna be working on those right away. Within the next couple of months, uh five of these would be projects that would be more toward. The fall that we would start those. And then like the most, the most important one, or one of the uh important ones, I didn't even, I omitted. And that's the capital improvement plan, I've talked a lot about it, so that would be one that we need to add. Um and again, that would be something that we'll start in. Uh but I just tried to give an ideas to like, you know, when we would actually get going on some of these things. And quite a few of them honestly are more operational, like a purchasing policy. You know, we we need to have staff um take a look at the employee manual provisions. Codification process, you know, that was something that I think um started several months ago and it's overdue. Uh so that's on the on the list. Uh looking at salary ranges for all employees as well as job descriptions. And um you know, one of the things that I had talked about was creating like a policy and administration committee. So that anytime city staff is working on um a a policy like purchasing or working on employee manual. Uh that we would, you know, do some initial uh review evaluation and take that information to a policy and admin committee. Which is uh where I came from at Prairie City, they were made up of at least two people, two members from the city council. And they would provide additional input in that process before we actually brought it back to the city council, so that's. Um that's something that's a part of us as well, creating a policy and administration committee. Then comprehensive plan update, which the mayor spoke about earlier. So again, this is, you know, this is kind of a rough draft. And we'll add like who the participants will be, whether it's something Lindsay and I are working on, whether it's um something that. I'll be working on with Jonathan and the Parks and Rec Board. Uh whether it's uh something that, you know, Lindsay and I and public work staff, you know, through Mark. Uh through his insight. And so that's something that we'll add to this. But I guess looking at this list, is there anything, I mean, and there's other things um that I learned through. My meetings uh with department heads, um but I think this kind of represents things that are more dire in nature.
If the council has some suggestions for your list, does that seem like a send you?
Sure, are, yeah, are tonight, um and then too, I need to know, like if there's an emergency kind of situation like. Yeah, I guess one thing I I can think of at Prairie City, we had issues with our uh emergency sirens. And so, I mean, that took. Quite a bit of staff time to work with our emergency management authority and and the third party consultant. To try to figure out, you know, what the problem was with the existing system, figure out where we were lacking coverage, so. Some of these other things that we're working on got put to the to the side, you know, temporarily until we could. Take care of that issue, which was more of a dire matter, so.
Most are welcome.
Sure.
Does the council feel like they need to have any input into prioritization or comfortable? I I don't know how you want to have input from us.
However, you'd like to do it.
Your capital improvement plan, is that under your city hall?
That's where I'm gonna put it, that's all about it.
I mean, I mean, obviously, those are pretty flexible dates anyway, so. And what's your GIS asset tracking, what is that?
Well, we don't have anything that's uh to my not well, we're working on it apparently through.
Where all the stops, where all the water meat, uh water, where all the stops for every house. They're working on it slowly.
I just wasn't sure what what that.
Yeah, we're not putting their tags in every vehicle.
It's a tremendous asset, once we get it completed.
Oh, yeah, yes, I just wasn't sure what that referred to, so that's all.
I think there's things in each category, you know, obviously they're gonna fall into your broader comprehensive or capital improvement plan. You know, some of the projects listed, you know, water plant expansion, sports complex, sidewalks. Um trail wayfinding, maybe pool maintenance, street maintenance. Uh you have your projects, uh EMS facility, building slash fire, uh library, community center. Um you have all these projects that I think are gonna fall into probably discussion around comprehensive and broader capital. Improvement funding. And then I think there's a financial aspect to discussing when you get into the budgeting about. You know, what's really actually financially available to fund those capital projects.
Start with needs first and then work to like where the priorities are.
So I think the ability to prioritize the capital improvement projects. Come, and when I look at this list, a lot of what I see is capital improvement projects have TBD on them. A lot of the more administrative document creation are defined with dates. And I think that's because we will have that prioritization discussion as we enter budget discussion.
Yeah, I was just curious what the council thought about, will they? They want to prioritize them?
I think, you know, from my perspective, we brought Jerry in with his experience and we brought Lindsay in with hers. I kind of have, I think everybody's, I know you've had the chance to sit down with him for an extended period of time and. I have Sue's had the chance to chat with them in and out here, they're both readily available to have a conversation with anybody if there's. Passion about things that you're passionate about, I think a lot of times council members jump on council or run and they're passionate about a certain issue or topic or project. I think Jerry's all ears on that to try to do, and then I think hopefully if what you've experienced from Jerry is hopefully. You're gonna see a presentation of all that information that's been gathered. And then a presentation of the financials or the ability to execute projects or avenues to fund and execute projects. And then I think it's our determination in an open meeting setting in front of the general public to discuss and deliberate on. What we're prioritizing and how and where, and so if there's projects that are missing, I'm sure we know there are, right? Um and and they get nitty and gritty, right, because we could break down street maintenance into sixty-five different items. Um sidewalks, we could, we could get into curb and gutter, I know is one, so. It's broad right now, I think, if I understand this right from Jerry and I's Friday meetings, this is really kind of a guide for him and Lindsay and staff to make sure. They're being communicative to us about these are the things we're working towards. And um it's more of a guide for them and an information guide to us. And we can dictate direction through our meetings if we feel like the direction's wrong on one of these policies or something like that.
I just wanted to know if you were, if you wanted something formal or just informal conversation with the council, so.
Do you have things you want added to the list?
You know, I got a lot more stuff, but the only two things that might be time sensitive is the rate study.
Water rate study.
Water, too, because we're about like to play a hundred and ten percent rule again, which I've thought of this year.
And we still need to meet with our reps.
Heidi, she's been not the most responsive.
We're we've been in. Out of compliance for that for a couple of years now at least, and the only other one upcoming, I think it's gonna be a little time since its election. Uh how would people know about the cutoff time charge?
So he mentioned that, he mentioned that, there will be a post about that, and then one thing I asked Jerry to do that I thought would have been nice is I've asked him to set up a public. An open public meeting for those people that have thought about running. It'll be like an open invite in the evening or something, and I've asked him to kind of just put on the curriculum of what do you have to do to run for council or mayor? Um what paperwork do you have to do? And then secondary, what's the role? What do you, what do you do and what is the expectations of a kind of an orientation, if you will, or introduction to the public? I've asked him to just consider hosting one of those that could be open to the public to attend and be educated about. How to run for council and what your role and what your duty is as an elected official.
I was wondering if it'd be quick, but if we can catch you in the next scoop, that way at least. People can say that we tried.
And if this gets approved, we'll have something to talk about, which we, you know, this is what our focus is gonna be within the next couple of months anyway.
Just, yeah, and I just.
It was kind of hard to even figure out what, you know. How do I apply, if I do apply, what what chores involved this, am I really interested or not? I probably understood this job better, I would have said no.
And I'm planning on doing like an orientation, I I've done that, I did that at Prairie City.
Yeah, he's going to, he's gonna do that, so there'll be a public meeting for that.
That is just you and him and me, I don't know.
Ken told me a dozen times, if you knew what this job was, there's no way.
Um so I think those, those will get out as well, I, there was a, there, there will be a, an announcement that basically goes out about what the. When do you have to file and those things? And you have to be filed by September eighteenth, Thursday, September eighteenth is the last day to file candidacy paperwork, so we're gonna. Try to work in a tighter timeline because it starts on August twenty-fifth and you have to get signatures, you know, if you're running, so. I mean, my task to Jerry is to try to turn this around quickly, so I would just be transparent and say there's probably no way it'll be in a scoop edition. Um because I would guess that we are probably two weeks away from kind of working down the list of trying to get our arms around building and developing a scoop. After we get um our new staff member in here, get her settled in. And then I think the broader, I I think that's the thing is the discussion is, what is the future of what we do for the scoop and. Uh is there, is there a frequency we like and want to keep or more frequently, or is there a digital version or is there a what? I think that's a strong question.
You could reset the template.
Maybe Erica wants to run for council, you never know. Um.
Ken's got, I know that.
So, I think. I think that's a broader, I think we need to talk about that too, but we need to get some information out for sure. Anything else, anybody?
Yeah, just so, because my, I'm gonna be updating the council every meeting on where we're at on this. Yes.
Just refine a little bit, add what, add a capital improvements plan. My brain needs these things to be in chronological order, so the August things first and. So I'd like to see it one more step refined and then I will be be happy to approve it.
I think this is a spreadsheet, yeah.
Refine one step more and then I will be happy to approve it.
Ken with the first, second with uh Joel, any last comments, anything? Great job with the bike ride this weekend, thank you for holding the board down. All those in favor signify with a I. Opposed, any abstentions?